Check, 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 check. Okay. Good evening. It's seven o'clock on the Tuesday. What's the date today? The 18th of February. This is the regular meeting of the T.K.A. City Council. Will you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Well, I see we have a distinguished visitor today, Representative Bruce Bryant from... What district do you do?
District 48.
District 48. Wonderful. I'm assuming you're here for the special proclamation for the accreditation renewal of the T.K.A. Police Department. Why don't you all come up and get that started?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Always happy to have distinguished people in our audience, besides just chief and, you know...
I'm not sure what he's talking about. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And members of the council. I've received a call a few weeks ago from your chief and asking me would I make the presentation of this certification. And I just wanted... It was just, I mean, it was an honor for me to be able to do this. And I'll tell you why. You don't realize, you have no conception, what it means to be nationally accredited in law enforcement. This is not a process that you can do overnight. This is a process that takes long, hard hours of being able to accomplish. You've got your policy and procedure manual. That's not good enough. It goes on and on and on. And you've got to do checks and balances. They come in, the National Accreditation Board will send a group of men in, and they will pick you from top to bottom. And the wonderful thing about being accredited is that you're saying that T.K.A. Police Department provides services like any and all other police departments in this country when they do things right. And that's what it's all about. And if you ever sued, and you will be, that comes with the territory being in law enforcement. And you've got that accreditation to take to court with you, saying, hey, this is the reason we did this, because this is the way they do it, and this is the way we have been taught to do it, and this is national... We are a nationally accredited agency. And my hat's off to Chief Parker. And I'll tell you this about Chief Parker. I really didn't know this man when I was coming up. I was a SLED agent, I think, probably when Steve started law enforcement in York County. But I really got to know him when he was hired as your chief. Matter of fact, when you hired him as chief, I was saying to myself, who is this guy? Yeah, that's the Parker guy that works for the city of Rock Hill. I knew that much. But I really didn't get to know him until we started having our joint meetings with the multi-jurisdictional units that we have in the county. And I tell you what, I found out that you hired a man, and now I've known Steve for... How many years you been chief?
Five years.
Five years. I've really got to know Chief Parker. And you hired a man that has the integrity, the honesty, and professionalism that it takes to have a law enforcement agency that you can be proud of. And I tell you, this accreditation process that the T.K.A. Police Department has been through, and what I admire more about it than anything else, they accomplished this while all this construction and that... This is not a six-month process. This takes years and years. And they accomplished this during the construction period of their new police department, which I know you all are so proud of. But my hats are off to this whole organization. And I just wanted to make those few comments and tell you that this accreditation process, national accreditation, is something that law enforcement agencies across this country beg to have. And I tell you, I'm not sure what the numbers are now as far as being nationally accredited, but every agency, even in York County, they don't have this. They don't have this to go on the wall, to prove their degree of professionalism and everything that goes along with being a great law enforcement agency. So, Chief, hey, it is an honor. And your accreditation manager, this is the guy that has really worked so hard. Lieutenant, my hat's off to you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to make a quick comment. One, this is not my award. This is the staff's award. But really, this could not be done without Lieutenant Spence's hard work. It's amazing. He's... During the process, he was here till midnight, working through different things. And it's just amazing what the team has done together to develop this. And I'm very thankful and appreciative to Mayor and council for allowing us the ability to make sure that we're one of the most professional agencies in South Carolina.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Thanks, Chief. Well-deserved honor. Thank you, Representative Bryant. We'll wait. Is everybody gonna leave? It's usually the case after each one. We'll let them give a chance to leave for a second. And then next, we'll go into the recognition of staff involved with the inclusive playground, which, one heck of a job, guys. Wow. That's...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity today to really acknowledge a special group of individuals. Throughout this entire process, we've talked about the critical contributions of all play together, your own role in this, sponsors, donors. But a lot of the thankless work to really get this playground built is behind me right here with these guys. It's with a bit of irony that they kind of did the grunt work for this playground when that's kind of what they do with their... They're the nuts and bolts of the city, often doing the thankless jobs that no one appreciates. But they provide a service to the citizens and to all the guests of our city, making it a beautiful place to live and a place to play. So, I'm humbled to have this opportunity to recognize these great gentlemen right now and all their contributions to this great facility that we have for the community to enjoy. At this time, I'd like to call and call up to the podium Tim Gillette. Chad Holland. Jeremy Hutchinson. Kevin Hood. Mike Solins. Joseph Hedpath. Fredera Wally. Kurtie Joyner. Chipper Smith. Damon Spears. Andy Marlowe. And Chip Page. If we can hear it one more time for this great group of guys.
Ursula. Ursula, you want to get in the picture? I thought you were gonna dance there, Ursula. Appreciate it, guys. That's a great work. And don't forget, the guy who really made it all happen, our city manager Charlie Funderberg, couldn't have done it without him. He pulled it all together. So... When I'm around in the area, you know, it used to be everybody talked about T.K.A. was the golf course of the police force. Now, they're talking about the All Play Together Playground. That is really an amazing accomplishment. And to see the kids, man, it's really something. All right. Did everybody clear out that wanted to clear out? Let's go to public comments. These are comments. You have three minutes by the Wagnometer that keeps it at the three-minute mark. Please stand up when I call your name and state your name and address. So first is Rachel Cunningham. Up to the microphone so you can be on TV and we can...
I want to be on TV.
Here you got it. Pull the microphone up so we can hear. Pull the mic... There you go. There you got it. Now you're all over.
All right. Rachel Cunningham, 5100, Maryana Lane. So, my questions, Ryan, thank you for inviting me tonight. I was not starting a typewriter war. I just had questions about, and I hate to follow up, what we just promoted and congratulated on, because I have a child that's disabled. That's amazing, the playground.
Really? Wonderful.
And so, but my questions are unfortunately about the public and the police department building in infinite audio. So my questions are, because I work full-time, I don't have time to go downtown and research at City Hall, all the information. And I feel like as council members, you are here and elected to answer the questions that we have. So, as to with the general contractor that did the police department, how many jobs has this general contractor bid on and won in T.K.A.? How many has he lost? Why would the general contractor offer to cut their own profit to let the city deal directly with a sub? If the G.C. did offer this, why just this one subcontractor who approved the contract with infinite audio? Also, did the subcontractor with infinite audio, sorry, have a license to work in T.K.A.? And also, did... How do we know infinite's markup on the equipment he did deliver? And has Mr. Paulson had a business license under a different company name for T.K.A.? That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody who want to respond to that or...
No, I just recommend, which I saw your requests is forced for online. I wrote down as quick as I could. Did anybody else take notes there? Okay, no, I saw you typing, and we'll definitely get you an answer to all those questions.
How many were there, by the way?
I had six.
Eight.
Nope, see, you type faster than I write.
Rachel, where'd you go?
I'm right here.
Was there eight? Six. At RL Cunningham 22@gmail. Six questions. Okay. Next, we have Liz Duda. Come on up and state your name.
Thank you. And we would like to pool our time, so the next three people would like to pool our time, please.
Okay, you have Liz, Jolene, and Kelly. I guess that's... Y'all just keep going, keep going, keep going?
Yes, nine minutes.
This is gonna be nine minutes?
No, six and a half.
Okay. You're on.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Duda, 1081 Palmira Drive, T.K.A., 15-year resident, a parent. I'm active in the community. I'm a member of the T.K.A. Citizen Water Advisory Council, which fought against the inept sewer company beginning in 2009.
That's where I know you.
When I shared my concerns with Mayor Bob Rundy, ultimately leading to the company's purchase by the city of T.K.A. in 2014. I tell you this so that you can see that my comments are not personal. Like you, I want what is best for the city. City council members, I appreciate your service to our community, and I have been privileged to volunteer alongside four of you in our community. So, what... The city of T.K.A. needs leadership that projects what Representative Bryant said, professionalism, integrity, and honesty, and adheres to strong ethical standards. This includes avoiding conflicts of interest and perceived conflicts of interest. A city of our size needs appropriate policies and procedures that are followed, and our leaders need to operate with common sense. The city of T.K.A. operates under a council manager form of government. The city manager role is a professional manager overseeing the day-to-day operations of the city. This includes procurement. I highlight here two procurement cases, the T.K.A. Police Department construction and the Rundy restroom renovation. The T.K.A. Police Department construction job had many disturbing irregularities. I highlight three concerns. Number one, awarding a job to the spouse of a city leader, in this case, the assistant city manager, is an obvious conflict of interest. Even if not explicitly prohibited in the city's procurement policy, this is common sense. My item number two is in reference to the city's procurement procedures, which require two bids for jobs over 25,000, and the city's standard practice of publicly publicizing for 30 days the request for proposals, or RFPs, and awarding the $78,000 job to the assistant city manager's spouse. So my comment number two is, not following procurement procedures is breaking city rules and standard practice. And we cannot be sure that the city was saving money by using this vendor, as the city manager alleged, if you didn't compare this bid to other bids. It seems that rather than being for the good of the city, it was exposing the city to additional risk. Since the city assistant city manager's spouse firms likely did not follow the bidding process, it likely did not follow the other RFP requirements designed to protect the city. For example, delivering to the city a certificate of insurance listing the city as an additional insured. So rather than helping the city and using taxpayer money wisely, it increased the city's risk. My point number three, regarding the assistant city manager's spouse's firm, I have heard what I consider to be reasonable questions of whether it had a T.K.A. business license from 2018 to present, when it did business for the city. I've also heard reasonable questioning of the history of the firm doing business with the city of T.K.A., including if competing bids were considered to avoid the appearance of nepotism. Whether the T.K.A. Police Department contractor had ever planned to hire this firm directly as a subcontractor, as the city manager alleged, or whether the plan to hire the firm came directly from City Hall. Similarly, the Rundy restroom job had disturbing irregularities, as presented in the July 2, 2019, Special City Council meeting. Number one, not following procurement procedures, that I just discussed, is breaking city rules and standard practice. Number two, in that meeting, the city manager told city council several times that the RFP had been outstanding for 30, or at least 30 days. When city council member Dash pointed out that the documentation said 19 days, the city manager responded that he had been rounding. Ask any child what number they round 19 to, even youngsters, rounded to 19 to 20, not to 30. The response that the city manager gave when his incorrect information was questioned did not demonstrate professionalism and integrity and honesty. It sounded like a knee-jerk response to protect himself from having provided misinformation to city council with the city lawyer's support. Number three, how could the city be sure that choosing that vendor was in the best interest of the city? As to the argument that it came in under budget, the vendor that got the job was the one who helped the city design its budget for the job. And there were no competing bids to which to compare that vendor's bid. Item number four, in that city council meeting, city council members discussed that the city's procurement policy was bad. Councilperson Overman asked the city manager and lawyer to revise it and present the proposed policy back to council in one month. Why was the policy not revised? In conclusion, I ask, are the city's vendor choices based on the best interest of the city and its residents? Do they demonstrate that the city is being a wise steward of taxpayer money? Or are vendors chosen because they are related to staff, or offer free rounds of golf to city staff, or give city staff free bracelets to the bouncy houses at the T.K.A. concerts, or offer other perks? Hopefully, you have seen the praise I have submitted to the city over the years for city staff whom I have felt has excelled. And some of those staff continue to work at the city today, and I've seen some recognized here today. Similarly, I now am speaking up when I see a problem. I, for one, have lost confidence in the management of our city. I ask you, a city council, in your role of guiding the city to meet its strategic vision, to hold accountable our city management, to ensure professionalism, integrity, honesty, strong ethical standards, and actions. I also ask you to revisit city of T.K.A. policies and procedures that need updating, including the procurement policy and employee handbook. And also, consider if you believe that your city attorney is advising you wisely, and is your director of human resources making good decisions. Recall, they report to the city manager. Thank you for your consideration. Regarding my questions, I have another... I have seven pages of questions related to these and other things.
Seven pages?
Yes, so I have hard copies that I can present to you. But those are the... Those were my talking points.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, everybody. Any comments? Any comments? Thank you, Liz. Staying on the subject, Michael Wagner wants to make some comments.
Evening, guys. Nobody on this council was in the council.
Name, name, man.
Oh, that's right. Michael Wagner, 935 Angelica. None of the people on council were in council, but what the mayor was referring to is that shot clock timer that exists because of myself. It's a three-minute timer. I began the very first time I ever came to this council to speak. It was a written document that I provided that took not two minutes and 30 seconds, that I timed, and took the time to write, took the time to bring my wife, expecting malfeasance. And 90 seconds into the meeting, after the Pledge of Allegiance, after a moment of silence, Michael speak 90 seconds into that meeting, I'm told by the city manager that my time has expired. And I said, really? Because it was on recording. 90 seconds into the meeting, my three minutes were expired. That's why that exists, because the city manager violated my Second Amendment topic of speaking. I came back the next time and spoke about the First Amendment. That was also ill-received, but I said that for 90 seconds, or for three minutes. My wife did finish by reading my comments, so that was great. My comments are fairly general, because I do not have a lot of facts. My questions are mere the first speaker, 100%. I wanted to speak from a position of knowledge, so I made a Freedom of Information Act. My only comments that I would say is it's a shame that only three people have come to speak. I would wager that three times that have expressed... Have showed up, and that's great. Three times what has showed up has probably at least made comments on Facebook. Showing up is what matters. And my comments are fairly general, just to share my experiences, although many others have been shared with me about less-than-respectful, appropriate behavior by city council. One was what I made a Freedom of Information Act. I made five questions, and the response to most of those were, that is just a question. I don't have the money for a lawyer, but it's very obvious that when you ask Freedom of Information Act questions, that is just a question is not an answer. Another experience was the comments on social media, the government-owned websites, which Hawaii and Michigan has had lawsuits and cities lost. When you ban users' comments that are not violent or vulgar, when you censor their comments individually, that's a violation of the law. That's happened to me personally. It happened a lot during the prayer thing, which I think was handled great by you guys. And I think you guys have done a great job generally. But to ban people, to ban their comments, is inappropriate. That's coming from City Hall. So, I spoke, and I asked about that, and I was told that it never happened. But the comments appeared the next day that were removed. So, a lot of... Just generally, I'll just say my concerns are a general concern about the leadership in City Hall. It's U4's responsibility to sort that out. We don't elect anybody in City Hall. But I think there are definite problems there. I've just shared a couple of my own. So, generally, what I would wish for is the city to be having a little more respect for the concerns of the citizens. And whether one can... Whether one agrees with me or not, and I'll be the first to say, probably a large majority of people don't agree with me, and that's not really required, but to not even let people speak. This is, other than voting, this is our only time, in three minutes, which I got 50% of one time. This is our only recourse. This is what democracy is about. If you don't let people speak, if you disrespect their concerns, it leads to hard feelings, and it leads to worse. So that is all my request is. I have a Freedom of Information Act by those same questions, and I want to speak from positions. I'll wait for them to be retrieved. Thank you, gentlemen. And again, you guys are doing a great job. Generally, appreciate your time.
Thank you. You got shut down by the Wagnometer, by the way. Any comments? None. And lastly, I believe, if this is correct, is... Tim?
Tim or Jim? Man.
Somebody on Marina? Okay. Please state your name and your address, and then you have three minutes to make comments.
Okay. My name is Tom Vannetti, and I live at 28007 Marina Drive. And my comments are concerning the rezoning request on Marina Drive. I'm concerned about the pending rezoning for several reasons. Number one is the affidavit of Steve Stegelbauer raises some serious concerns about the long-term success of the Marina and the Marina owner's intentions. Before granting this rezoning and expanding the Marina, I believe that the city should check with the various agencies, including the FBI, SLED, D.HAC, and IRS, that also received a copy, to see if any of these allegations are valid. It would be detrimental not only to the immediate neighbors on Marina Drive, but to the entire city, if this operation and expansion plans were to go bankrupt. If that did happen, it's possible that there could be three out of the six houses on Marina Drive in this bankruptcy. Number two, if this property is rezoned to commercial, there are currently no guidelines as to what type of commercial activity it could be used for. The Marina overlay plan will rezone all properties, including this one in question, in this area to mixed use and clearly define what uses are acceptable. I question what possible benefit to the residents does granting this rezoning now as opposed to waiting for the Marina overlay have. Number three, if this does go through, there would be no reason that others on Marina Drive should not be granted the same rezoning should they request it. This could also create a number of problems on Marina Drive and for the entire city. You know, like everyone on Marina Drive could request a commercial rezoning, and we could have offices or hot dog shops or whatever on Marina Drive. Number four, I believe that a vibrant Marina area would be great for the city and Marina Drive. However, I do think that the owner of the Marina submitting a business and expansion plan for review by the city officials and residents would be necessary before beginning rezoning and expansion. So basically, what I'm saying is we should check out these allegations. There are some very serious things that Steve brought up. I don't know, you know, the legitimacy of any of them, but I think they should be looked into prior to granting this rezoning. And also, with the Marina overlay so close at hand, why not wait for that, which would give us all the same guidelines to go by? And also, I think it just... It would be, you know, very beneficial to everyone if we were all able to sit down with Mr. Denton and see what his plans are and, you know, what financial prospects he has to bring him to completion.
All right. Thank you very much for coming to us.
Thank you.
We appreciate everybody coming up. We always welcome your comments. And I think I'll use some explanations of some of the things now. With the first thing, I guess you call it the infinite audio, we've adjudicated this, so to speak, already. This came up in July. So if you... Whatever you're hearing now is somebody who... So if you, whatever you're hearing now is somebody who, who we informed, who came to us with a complaint, and we informed them of what we had decided. And they didn't like that decision, and so they wanted to, they said, no, we don't like that decision. We want to do something else. It'd be like, the person you voted for didn't get elected, so you go down and burn the neighborhood down until you get it right. So maybe you don't like the president. Well, that's your president for four years. That's just the way it goes. That's what the, that's what the people elected. So that's just the way it is. So when we, we had, we knew we had some irregularities there. It looked bad. I mean, if you saw the NBC story, Charlie said it looked bad, Alicia said it looked bad. They both said the same thing. It did look bad, okay? So we took that in consideration, and we had to consider anything from termination to what? Nothing? Nothing at all. So we talked over the phone for a week. I think we talked every day about this. We didn't just blow this off. I mean, we had, it was probably the week before the July city council meeting. I talked to Heather every day for an hour or two every day. I talked to Gus. I talked to Ryan. I talked to Alicia. We didn't just, you know, we wanted to kind of figure out what we wanted to do. And everything from termination to do nothing was on the table. And, you know, it takes three votes. Three people on council have to agree before anything gets done. And so we started at the top end. Are we going to terminate anybody? And I think, to their credit, Heather, Gus, and Ryan said, absolutely not. Absolutely not. We're not going to do that. So there's one thing off the table. What's next? Well, there's letter of admonishments, or letter of reprimand, or whatever we want to call it. And so we said, okay, let's try that route. And then we started sending that back and forth to everybody. We were adding sentences, taking sentences out. This word comes out, this word comes in. And then we couldn't get everybody to agree with that, but we got four people to agree to that. So that's what was the decision. Okay, so if you don't, I mean, if you don't like it, that's, that's the people that you elected have to come up to a, to a conclusion. And that's just the way it is, so. You can vote everybody out, or vote everybody in, or whatever you want to do, but, you know, everything that we do here takes at least three votes. I don't win everything I do. I mean, I don't, I don't win most of the time, I guess. Heather doesn't, or Heather doesn't win everything. Alicia doesn't win everything. But you have to have a consensus on council that the mayor has one vote, just like Gus does, just like Heather does. I don't have a vote and a half. I don't have two votes. I have one vote. Everybody here has one vote. Five total, and it has to be a preponderance. It has to be three people has to decide. And if three people say no, then you move on to the next thing. Just like some things that might happen here today. You might see a four-to-one vote or a three-to-two vote. But they spoke their piece, and I respect them for it. We're still friends. We don't always agree with everything, but that's fine. I mean, we didn't agree on the budget, but I'm still their buddies, you know? We're still trying to get along. That's the way government works. And if you don't like something, you know, you, you change them out. If you do like something, you keep them going, but... So I guess that's about as clear as I can make it. Does anybody else want to say anything about this?
I was gonna, I was gonna do this during comments, but I'll kind of address it now. And first off, Liz, if you would please send me your questions, I'll answer your questions. You know, Mike, to, to what you said, when I was running, you asked me some questions and I, I met with you. So while up here, you have three minutes. I'll give you as much time as you want, anytime, or any other resident. I will say one thing I'm not going to do, and this has been requested. Folks, everybody needs to understand that, to some degree, we have twelve or thirteen thousand bosses, all of us do. The residents of this city. We were elected by a majority of the people that vote to, to do what's best or in the best interest of this city. I love this place. This is why I ran. This is why I do what I do. I've been here twenty-plus years. And, and I'm, I'm very passionate about it. Now, can we make everybody happy every time? No. If somebody missteps, blatantly obvious that, that this incident had bad optics. But at the end of the day, was it bad for the city? What's worse for the city is all this stuff. I don't answer questions like this on social media, because the minute you do that, the trolls chime in underneath, frequently with misinformation. Sometimes it's accurate information, but frequently with misinformation. And the more that goes out there, the more it builds, and it builds, and it builds, and sometimes people start to believe the misinformation. So if you want a question answered, I'll gladly answer it, and I'm not going to speak for everybody else, but I bet everybody else would say that, because we were all elected to represent what's best for the city. Understand what we're all up here trying to do right now. We're trying to bring in some good commercial development to this area. Restaurants, meeting places, places where people can hang out in our city, instead of having to go someplace else. Good businesses that'll, that'll be good core for our city. Cataba Park. This gorgeous jewel of a thing that, that we're going to build, and we're going to build it. Okay? You want to build it with donations? You want to build it with raised taxes? That's not a threat, by the way. I'm just saying. This is a park that we want to build. Look at all play together. We built that. And we built it with somebody else's money. Win-win. These are things that we're trying to make this city a better place to be for all of us. All right? We have to make it as attractive to everybody. I'm proud of where I live. If I could get up and carry this mic around right now, I'd carry it around, because I want to get up and walk around and preach. I'm proud of where I live. And I want everybody else to feel that way, too. And I don't want people stirring up things just to stir them up for no reason. If you have questions, we'll answer the questions, anytime. But at the end of the day, when all this happened back in July, I think we looked at the, the big picture. We did act upon it, guys. We acted upon it, and we did something about it. But I think at the big picture, we looked at, was the city harmed in anything that was done? And I, I, I feel like we made the right call. If we didn't, we didn't. You're welcome to disagree. It's what makes this such a great country. You're welcome to disagree.
While you're on that subject, were any laws broken or anything outside of the procurement policy?
No. Are we, are we looking at those policies? Are we looking at, did we take action? Yes, every bit of it. Which are, great point, Ryan. Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment?
I'll come, and I was also going to wait, but I'll go ahead and talk now. So I agree, we, we do have a great city. This is the best city. There's nowhere else I want to live. Nowhere. Here. And that's one of the reasons why I ran. I cared so much about this community. I wanted to dedicate time to make sure that our city was being run and managed to the best of its ability. Over two years ago, I was elected to represent the people. And we were fortunate at our last meeting to be there to witness Ryan and Gus saying their oath of office and talking about how they're serving at the best of their ability. And, and all of those things that they mentioned in their oath of office, I got to hear again as a reminder of what my role is here on council and what I committed to you all to do in this position. And some people don't agree with me when I say, I think that what was done looked unethical, seemed unethical. They don't agree with, with me, and that's fine. But that doesn't mean that I don't have a voice. I realize we, we all had these conversations months ago, and we talked about it. But my opinion then and my opinion now does not, has not changed. I still don't think that we took the proper and right steps. We didn't follow city policy. And to me, that's a big issue. Because if we can't trust the very people at the top to follow the policies that we've enacted, then why should we expect anyone else within the city to do so? I'll also mention something Bruce Bryant said. He said, you have to do the right thing. You have to tell the truth. You have to be honest. You have to have integrity. You have to have ethics. Someone asks you a question, you respond, and you answer it with, to the best of your ability. You tell the truth. You always tell the truth. It's been, I think, a really hard week for a lot of us. It's not fun to have your dirty laundry, quote unquote, aired on the media. But again, if you see something wrong, you've got to stand up and you've got to say something. And if we can't have a voice, and we can't say that, or we can't do that, then we're not doing our job. We, we are in this role to hold people accountable and to make sure our city maintains being the best city in, in the world. And you do that by transparency, honesty, integrity, following your policies, sticking, sticking to doing what's right. Like Bruce said, you have to do what's right. And I question, do we do what's right in this situation? And I don't think we did. And someone's got to stand up and say that. We, we'll address it. We'll deal with it. But it doesn't mean it didn't happen. And it doesn't mean, mean that people shouldn't be held accountable for their actions. Thank you.
We will never discourage you folks from coming to and speaking to us, whatever you want to talk about. That's fine. But you can always, you know, I've never turned down an opportunity to go speak to a group or, or forgot to answer an email or a phone call. So you can call all of us. We're all equals up here. So please, call us or email if you have any concerns, and we will tell you as mu, as much as we can tell you. We always do. I think we always do. I don't know anybody here that holds back, so. Please contact us, let us know.
I just want to clear up one point. Everyone that stood at the podium today asked legitimate questions. And when I made my comment about, you know, saying things just to say them, I was not commenting on what you had said. They're all very legitimate questions. But if anybody was on social media, on any of the things that have come up that kind of made our city not look the way it needed to look, there were a lot of comments that were made just, I'm going to say troll, okay? Things that were not true, that were said just to be said. I'm not talking about legitimate questions. You, as a citizen, you elected us. You have a right to have those questions answered, and we're going to answer them. So I want to make sure that, that everybody understands. I am not saying that you don't have a right to question us. Man, you sure do. That's, that's, that's what this country's all about.
All right. I use my social media for pictures of meals and cats, so I don't really get into all that stuff on there, so.
And the weather.
Oh, I love the weather. I love the weather. Okay. That's it. Last call. We're going to move on to the approval of minutes. City council, you've seen the minutes. Is there any additions, subtractions, or deletions? Seeing none, hearing none, the minutes stand as written. Item number four, the committee reports. T K K Forever Foundation with Heather.
Okay. So T K K Forever, so this past, I guess it was two weeks ago now, Saturday, February eighth, we had our first annual sweetheart dance. We had a hundred and sixty in attendance and sold a hundred and seventy-four tickets, so all those proceeds are going towards Cataba Park. Had a lot of positive feedback, so that was exciting, and thank you so much to our sponsors and all those involved who made that happen. Bark for Cataba Park is coming up Saturday, March twenty-eighth. Make sure to register for that event. And then we have Taste of York County coming up Friday, April twenty-fourth. I'm working on finalizing vendors and working on items for the silent auction. We are almost sold out of our VIP, but there's plenty of general admission tickets left. For our community sponsorships, Parks and Rec, specifically Parks and Rec sponsorships, we're current at, currently at fifty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Just to give you an idea, we budgeted twenty-one thousand for Parks and Rec and fourteen thousand five hundred for events. That leaves an additional eighteen thousand dollars that will be redirected towards Cataba Park. So thank you to all of the Parks and Rec Department and then T K K Forever committee members for working to secure those sponsorships. And then corporate sponsorships, we have had a very promising meeting with Comporium, and hopefully we should be hearing back any time now. And that's it for T K K Forever.
All right, thank you, Heather. Next is Economic Development Commission with Gus.
Mine's going to be pretty brief. We, we have not met since the last council meeting. We do have a meeting this coming Monday, but in the interim, many of the members have been working on some of the things we discussed at the last council meeting. That's all I got.
Thank you. Planning Commission, Alicia.
All right. Planning Commission has been hard at work, as always. Just to let you all know before I get into these great updates that we meet on the first Monday of every month here in this room at six-thirty, so I encourage you all to attend. And look forward to seeing you all here. Just to let you know, some of the highlights of our meeting, we talked about the final plat for the courtyards at T K K. The only thing we'll own for this project is the stormwater system for that, so that's interesting. All the streets are, will remain private. It will be a gated community. We also had someone come from the nearby villages of Palmetto, HOA, and share some feedback on that process. So that was great to have some public input. We always appreciate that, as David said. We also talked about the public art policy and made some tweaks to that, which I'll be presenting here in a little bit. And then our planning commissioners gave, provided us with some updates in regards to the new role that they're playing in attending all of the local and planning commission meetings for York County, for Fort Mill, for Clover, to make sure that we are well-aware and engaged with our, our neighbors and making sure that whenever they're making decisions, we are aware. I think I just said that three times. So we know how it might impact our residents here, and we can either adjust to that or we can provide them feedback, so. Let's see, in terms of a development update, Stonecrest Village Three, that was approved in pre-construction meeting, will be happening soon. And then for the office park in that area as well, the second phase has been approved. And they were anticipating to have the pre-construction meeting soon, so. Some of our commercial development underway and making progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to item five, unfinished business. This is the second reading of an ordinance to rezone T M S number five eight four dash zero nine dash zero one dash zero zero five, which is twenty-eight zero zero two Marina Drive from R fifteen and Marina Overlay District to B one and Marina Overlay District. The owner of the T K K Marina also owns the subject property and the adjacent residence property located at two eight zero zero one Marina Drive. The applicant intends to use the property as an administrative office, as administrative offices for the Marina. In order to do so, the base residential zoning must be changed from B one to permit this commercial use. Are there any questions?
Mayor and members of council, at your dais, you will see a letter that we have all received from the nearby neighbors about this development in addition to the speaker, Mr. Vinetti, that came and spoke to us tonight. Some good points made, especially given that we just approved at our last meeting the update to the comprehensive plan, which does include looking at the Marina Overlay District and rezoning that to mixed use. Right now, Heather, myself, in addition to economic development, Planning Commission members are, city staff are taking a look at the mixed use classification. That is about a six-month process to a year process. And then this neighborhood will be going through that process of seeing if they're still interested in having their properties rezoned to this new classification. And so what I would like to do is request that we table this item for now, wait for this process to work itself out. That way, we'll have the right plans in place to ensure that development going forward will be thoughtful and logical, and we'll have the proper responsible zoning in place.
All right, I have a motion to postpone this, to table the rezoning. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ryan Richard. Are there any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is tabled. Which means there's no decision. Do you understand what tabled means? Okay. We're postponing the decision. Sometimes people call me later and say, what does that mean? All right, let me get on six B, technology at its finest.
Five B.
What did I say? Six? I meant five. I'm on five. I just, the mouse is... I did, but it just doesn't go all the way down. Okay. Five B, this is a consideration of letter of credit and performance labor and material certainty agreement for final plat Trinity Phase One. At the Monday, January second meeting, the planning commission approved the final plat for Trinity at T K K Phase One contingent upon approval of the letter of credit and performance labor and material certainty agreement. Staff has received a letter from the project engineer certifying certain improvements have been installed, and his letter indicates an opinion of probable cost to complete the required infrastructure. The infrastructure to be secured is the final lift, is the final lift of asphalt on the roadway sidewalks, testing of utilities and landscaping. The required improvements are to be bonded by a letter of credit from a reputable financial institution, the amount of a hundred and six thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Are there any questions?
I'd just like to make a quick comment before we go. So I just want to kind of give a scope of kind of, not just this particular plat, but overall. On July eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, and I quote, "We want to create a lifestyle for the Carolinas. A gathering place for the community, a place..." a gathering place for the community, a place to truly congregate together. There will be medical, retail, restaurants, and shops on property." We were presented with some information back in November with the promise of a new plan by the end of the year. I have yet to see anything. I have been told things like senior cottages and a charter school. If you know me at all, you would know that neither one interests me. Right now, what we have is a lot of dirt, which will pave the way for townhomes, more residential. I don't know how this council can be any clearer when it comes to residential. We want to diversify our tax base, and that means economic development in the form of commercial and retail. I realize that mixed use developments ultimately come with some residential. And in the P D D, that was specified. What upsets me is that promises were made, and yet here we are. Since the required infrastructure has been installed, I will approve the L O C presented today. But I want to be very clear where I stand moving forward.
All right, any other comments? I will entertain a motion.
I'll do it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a motion to approve the letter of credit and the performance, labor, and material surety agreement for the final plat Trinity Phase 1.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard, time to vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. Let's go to 5...
6.
6A. City Hall Generator, just got to move this down a little bit. Did it again, did it again. All right, this is new business awarding of a bid for a backup generator at City Hall. The city has awarded, the city has been awarded a FEMA pre-disaster mitigation grant to install a backup generator at City Hall. The project was bid out and five bids were received with Generator Power Systems, Inc. as the lowest qualified responsible bidder. The city's portion after reimbursements would total approximately $12,500. Not bad. Are there any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd like to make a motion to award the bid for a backup generator at City Hall to Generator Power Systems Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $50,000 and direct the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to this FEMA grant.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. 6B, public art policy. This consideration of a Planning Commission recommendation of a public art and monuments policy. At their February 3rd meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of a resolution establishing a public art and monuments policy for the city. The purpose of this policy is to establish the criteria for informed, transparent, and high-quality decision-making when approving or declining proposed public art projects, which will form a long-term aspect of the city's citizens' and visitors' experience and cultural enrichment. This policy will apply to all and any public art projects and monuments located or proposed in the public domain within the city of T K municipal boundaries. These may be standalone projects or proposals within council, within council or from the community, embellishments to Capitol Works and other projects arising from time to time. Take it away.
All right, good evening, Mayor and members of council.
Speak up.
Pleased to be here tonight to present on a public art policy, along with Susan Britt. And we thought that it was, we thought it was important to take the time to share some information with you all about public art, give some examples of things, talk about the policy before we asked you to actually vote on the policy. So with that, we are going to talk to you tonight about what is public art, how it's important to our city, or why it should be important to our city, give you some places and examples, talk about the Planning Commission recommendation that we'll be reviewing, talk about financial considerations, and then potential next steps. Okay, so with that, we wanted to make sure we took the time to talk about what is public art exactly? So what distinguishes public art is the unique association of how it's made, where it is, and where it's located. Public art can express community values, enhance our environment, transform a landscape, heighten awareness, or question our assumptions. The most important thing you'll note about public art is that it's, well, public. It is in a place that can be free and accessible to members of the public to enjoy or experience at their own terms. Additionally, it has a lot of benefits to the community, such as promotion of community and togetherness. It also creates place making. It helps with economic development and local participation.
Why is public art important to T K? All of you participated in our recent comp plan update. And as a part of that, and the community input that we received for that comp plan update, there was high evidence and proof that our citizens want and support public places. That they, the public art actually is a part of our history. It talks about our story. What is T K? Who are we? What are we? Public art can visually connect civic spaces. It can inspire walkable communities. It can make the man-made environment become a part of the community character. It provides access to people of all ages, backgrounds, their ability. It inspires connections to place. It fosters social interaction and creates memorable experiences. It increases pedestrian activity and inspires a healthy, connected community. And it adds character, as I said. It creates an identity for who we are by telling our story. It highlights the existence of the creative economy and stimulates it. It reinforces that small-town feel and the story of our city and the identity of our home. It's not just, there's not a lot of developable land left within our area, as you're well aware. So redevelopment becomes more important. And public art is a great opportunity to establish a sense of place as we go through our redevelopment. If you go through now, you go down Highway 160, you turn on the Gold Hill Road, how do you know when you're in T K and when you're not in T K? Public art can do that for you. It can give you that sense of identity and that sense of place that says, welcome, come to, this is our home, this is a special place.
So what we wanted to do is just identify some opportunity areas for you to think about as you're looking at this policy. And so I broke it into three different categories. So parks, we have two park projects coming up that will be under construction, Windjammer Park, Kataba Park. You'll note Trailhead Park, that's pretty amazing. And Heather Smiling, I know that she worked on some tiles that will be, that have been painted. I know Gus, I think you did, you all might have done some, that will actually be, that were painted and will be placed in the park. And that's going to be so special to the community because not only is that something creative and cool, but it gives you a sense of, that you've put your thumb on that and you're always going to be, a piece of you is always going to be embedded in that park. So that's just something really cool. And then, of course, we have lots of trails. You know, lots of people enjoy those, and so there's always an opportunity there. We have a lot of opportunities in our right-of-way. Our entrance into T K, as Susan mentioned, and I know Councilmember Overman mentioned this as well several times, figuring out how can we do something cool or creative to define T K? And maybe that is through some type of public art piece or monument that really enhances and welcomes people into our city. Crosswalks are a great opportunity for us to take a look at, and I'll show you some examples here shortly. Roundabouts and cul-de-sacs, if you look at the roundabout that's at Hubert Graham, right at where Walmart and the daycare all intersect, there's a great opportunity there to enhance that area through public art. Utility cabinets is another example. If you drive down T K Road, you drive on the left, on the right, near the trail, you see these big boxes, bland colors, they just kind of blend in with the community. That's been a recent trend that we can look into, figuring out how we can make those unique pieces or pieces that have meaning to folks as they experience them, either in their vehicles or while walking along the trail. And then lastly, public facilities. As you know, we recently have been soliciting public, members of the public, to submit items that could be displayed on top of the new water tower. That's a great opportunity that we could look into and potentially use as a pilot for this new policy, a learning opportunity. And of course, we have our other facilities, the Glennon Center, the Clubhouse, Fire and Police Station, City Hall, and utility buildings. So I wanted to just share with you all some images of different public art projects that I was able to find. Up in the left corner, you'll see a utility cabinet that is, has a mural on it. This has become a popular trend in a lot of cities. Even Charlotte has it, St. Pete's, I think Asheville, maybe Greenville, when you guys went there, you saw some. It's really cool, it's unique. You can utilize a lot of different artists, and you can even engage with local artists within your own community. On the bottom left, you've got an example of landscaping and some different statues that you can incorporate within that just to help to beautify an area. In the middle there, you'll see some crosswalks. So I know that we've had a lot of conversations even recently about our crosswalks and making sure that they're safe and they're lit, and Heather Smiling, because she's been leading the effort. But you'll see that when you take art and you incorporate it into some existing infrastructure, it draws your attention to it. And we all want to draw attention to our crosswalks and make sure that they are the safest place for people to, or pedestrians to cross. And so it also can have a safety component to it. Upper right is an example of a trail, so trails are very important to our city. That's just an example of something we could do or create. And then on the bottom, I wanted to give you something with water and art, because of Windjammer Park coming along. These were two statues that looked pretty cool to me because they looked like the image was wrong. And then as I stared at it longer, I realized that that was purposeful. And so I just thought those were unique examples to share. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Susan to talk about the Planning Commission's recommendation to council.
Okay, as you all know, the Planning Commission, this is, the public art policy was a part of their adopted work plan for 2020. They went through several weeks, and maybe a couple of months even, in reviewing the public art policy, tweaking the language, working on that. And then, so at their last meeting, they actually approved that draft and recommended that the council adopt that by resolution. It was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of what's in the policy. Now, the policy is a guiding document. It's not a regulatory document. It's not a funding document. It's a guide. So the policy would seek to establish the basis on which the public art projects and monuments are commissioned or approved. It would seek to establish the key criteria to make informed decisions when approving or rejecting proposed public art projects, which would form a long-term aspect for the city's citizens' and visitors' experience. So some of the things that are included in this is the appointment of a public art jury by council of up to five voting members. And it's recommended that a consideration be given to members of this community, the public art, members of the community from the neighborhood, perhaps where the art is going to be located, maybe from the T K Connect, the, someone from the arts community who has some experience, such as maybe someone from the York County Arts Council, T K Forever and Planning Commission. The projects would need to meet certain criteria. It would have to enhance the location and where it's going to be sited. It has to be, there have to be specific plans as to its content, its form, whether or not it adds to the history and the heritage and the environment, whether it's appropriate and suitable for that area, and what's the impact on adjacent amenities or other uses. What is the quality of design, the materials, the finishes? Whether or not it provides something innovative, fresh, creative, and that it overall engage, inform, and encourage engagement and activity with the citizens. And then inspire, provide reflection, arouse curiosity, enrich, and stimulate. There would also be technical considerations, such as the safety, the durability of the product, whether it's practical, how robust is it? Is it vandal resistant? And there would have to be a detailed plan for maintenance, including the annualized cost for maintenance. And if there were agreement on whether, on the conditions and terms, if the art had to be decommissioned or moved or relocated. So I did want to point out that the policy, again, is adopted by resolution. It's, the funding would have to be by ordinance, if you chose a funding mechanism. And that could, again, be part of the budget process. You could adopt a policy by resolution separately and then proceed to work on a budget to actually fund and implement public art. It, so I'm going to turn it back over to you for this one.
So, thank you Susan. So there was a reason why public art policy didn't just fall on the Planning Commission's work plan, but it also fell on councils that was presented at our last meeting by Heather. So I wanted to share a couple of things to consider and to think about as we think about the element of finances around public art. So successful public art programs include a funding mechanism. So we can approve parks all day, right? But if we don't have the funding to back it up, or if we don't have those plans in place, it's unlikely that it will get done, and it will take a lot, much longer and a lot more effort. So certainly when we approve policy, we want to be thoughtful about that, about this policy, and making sure that it actually can be implemented and have an impact on our city. So public art projects are often tied to capital projects due to the fact that they're one-time expenses, and so they've got one-time funding allocations, and they're typically significant in their amount. You can think about things from a percentage standpoint. So do we choose a certain percentage of the budget of that project, capital project budget? Do you look at the construction budget of the facility or the infrastructure and allocate your funding based on that? And/or do you set a not-to-exceed amount so that you cap the amount that each project could potentially spend on a public art project? You can also look at pooling of public art dollars, which I would recommend, especially given our small size of our city. Sometimes our capital projects aren't as significant in dollar amount. So if we can pool funds, then we can collect money over time and then do something more significant at a park or at Kataba Park or something like that. So you have more flexibility when you pool, when you pool funds from your capital projects. You also have to think about your operating and decommissioning expenses. So sometimes your art requires continual maintenance. It might be that a mural needs to be retouched every once in a while. It might be that a statue needs to be cleaned or repainted, things like that, that you want to think about. And that would need to be included in your operating budget. And you also have decommissioning costs. So sometimes when you have a mural that might be posted on a fence and it's, you know, we're no longer able to maintain it, there's the cost of the labor and the supplies to paint over it or things like that to consider. And then also private development requirements. And this is something that Heather and I had spoken about before. Do you extend this public art requirement to private developments? And, you know, I'll let Susan talk about what that process might look like. She's the expert on the...
For instance, you can amend some of your P D D standards or put it in your mixed-use standards that a development of a certain size or acreage would then have to establish some, as a part of that, would have to establish some public art component, be it, you know, something in a public garden, where they have a fountain, or some kind of statue, or that they have, you know, paintings on the buildings or things of that nature. So you can require a certain percentage of that by doing that. There are also, you know, other opportunities you can go through with private development, depending on the type of development that's going in there. I'm going to give you just a little example here. How many of you have ever seen Casey at the Bat at Cherry Park? How many of you have ever seen Casey at the Bat at Cherry Park, that statue? Well, that was one of my projects when I was there, I led the fundraising to buy that. It was a city-sponsored project that was bought by private dollars. We raised $270,000 in six months to purchase that from the sculptor in, in Loveland, Colorado. And I would say that that's probably the most photographed place in Rock Hill. Beats, I think, Glen Can Gardens. So that's the impact that public art can have on your economy as well. So that's, I think, another element to think about. But again, we can probably amend regulations to require public art.
So with the financial considerations, I wanted to give you some examples to put some context around that. So what I did here on this slide was I presented three different scenarios for you to consider and think about, and any of these numbers can be changed or shifted, but it was just for relative, so that you had some, some idea. So for the first scenario, you'll see at the top, so you could say that you want to structure your program so that you have a project budget percentage, so choose any number, .5, 1%, 2%, and the total capital project budget for public art would be determined based on that percentage. Another way we could look at it is taking a look at the construction budget. So you might not want to take your full capital project budget, you might want to take, just look at, how much does it cost to actually build this facility? Now let's take a percentage of that and apply it towards your public art. And then thirdly, we can also do your project budget, so looking at maybe just the, the capital project construction budget, basing your percentage off of that, but then also on top of that, adding a not-to-exceed amount. And so, for example, you could say not to exceed $50,000 for the public art allocation. And that would be, $50,000 would be equate to, for 2%, a $2.5 million project, which we don't typically have a whole lot of them, but that's just a, an example. And in the charts below, there's also scenarios. So in the first scenario, I gave you what the public art budget would be for $100,000 capital project budget, and then just assumed a $90,000 construction budget. So in scenario one, your public art allocation would be $500. Scenario two, 900, and scenario three, 1,800, that was the 2%. In my experience with public art, which is not significant at all, I'm not an expert, I will say that those budgets are very low for public art. So if you think about, you know, purchasing something, a mural, or a sculpture, or things like that, they tend to be pretty, pretty pricey. So if we were to want to go with this, this option, this might be an opportunity for you to either pool your funds, so that when you have multiple projects like this, you develop a balance, or you could do maybe a bigger project. Or this might be some, a scenario where you might want to just do something that enhances something that is already existing. So you might want to upgrade the lighting, or upgrade railing, or install bike racks that have some sort of artistic element to them, things that you can just sort of complement the already existing budget. And then the second scenario down there at the bottom, that's just giving you examples, if you had a $1 million capital project budget, and how those, those three options up there would play out. So $5,000 towards public art for scenario one, $9,000 for scenario two, and $18,000 for scenario three. And so the point of all this is just to try to give you some context and examples of how it would play out in reality. So at this point in time, the planning commission, based on their work plan, has evaluated and recommended a public art policy to the city council. Susan and I have presented some information to you, provided you with some options, and at this point, we'd like to turn it over to discussion. If we were to add a funding requirement to the policy, it then would be, we would need to go through the ordinance process, which would require public hearing and two reads. That's certainly an option. There's, I put "to be determined" because there's no rush on it, but we certainly want to be thoughtful in thinking about, you know, what is best for our city, and how do we want to move forward with this. So with that, thank you all for your attention and your time and, and thought on this, and if you have any questions, I welcome them.
Thank you very much, it looks very promising. I can't wait to see what's next. So the planning commission has us now, they're going to come to us with a recommendation?
They, they've made their recommendation for the adoption of the policy. It would be up to you to perhaps discuss a, a funding mechanism as part of your budget process. So you could adopt the policy tonight, and then you could adopt a, a funding mechanism as part of your budget ordinance, if, if you so desire.
Well, I'm not so sure we need a policy tonight, unless somebody's just really fancy about it, and would like to look at it a little bit longer, I think, but I think it's really a wonderful little idea. And we can even take charge of it right now, we were discussing some type of art piece for the new Windjammer Park, you know, where people out in the lake can identify that they're looking at, at Windjammer, or they're looking at T K. We talked about something that lights up at night, or something. Maybe it can be some kind of public art that somebody will want to come and take pictures of, that, with them, because where, where do people in T K want to take a picture of something now? At the fountain? I, I don't know, I never see anybody do that, but people would be walking around at, at Windjammer Park if they can stand next to a whatever, I don't know, I'm not very artsy, I'm afraid, I draw stick figures, but maybe a big sail, or boat with a sail, or something that says T K, or logo, something like that, you know? You know, we, I'm sorry? Or something, you know, somebody very artsy can.
David's donation to the city.
I think that points out, again, the fact that if you're having a public art jury, these are the people who, who should understand what is the art and what's the intent of it, and then they would make that recommendation to, to council for that art piece.
I just want to say that with the water tower, somebody made a recommendation of my head on a donkey to be put up there. Now I know who did it. Okay. So, but I, I do like this idea, I think it's a fantastic idea. So I just would like to see, you know, what the recommendations and more, but yeah, I think we can, we can settle this easily, and when we come up with the budget coming up, work out something. Great, it's like another amenity.
I would, thank you so much for your work on this, I just have a quick question slash comment. So I appreciate you putting together the financial scenarios, I think that's really helpful. I know we kind of talked through it a little bit, but seeing it kind of mapped out makes it a little bit easier to, to choose something that's going to work for us. I think personally, based on, you know, some of the goals that we have, if we could potentially, and I'm going to look at you, Mayor, since you set up the agenda, to bring the policy forward, perhaps in March, and then at our March meeting, and then we can discuss the financial ordinance as it relates to the budget process as we get into later in the spring and the summer. Just with the projects that we have coming up, I would, I don't want to miss out on opportunities, so I would like to kind of move what we can along as quickly as we can.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the audience?
I got one quick question. Because it's in public places, would we be able to use impact fees?
Your impact fees are categorized specific to the impact fee study. Police station, fire station, things within those. Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec, things like that.
Can we put a park in the roundabout? It'd be a small park, but still it'd be a park.
And the roundabout at, at Hubergram?
Yeah.
Sure, there would be no safety concerns there with that. Yeah, is, is building, you know, I mean, if you talk about Catawba Park specifically, could impact fee dollars go towards those? I would say probably, but I mean, there, that's something I would want to consult. I'd want to consult back and look specifically at the study that was provided and adopted by council. Because it, it got very specific as to, you know, what those fees were being collected for, so whether it could specifically, could or could not, I, I'd want to go back and, and talk with Tischler Bice, and circle back around with you.
Well, I mean, same thing, like, as David was speaking, I mean, I've, Windjammer, I just feel like anybody riding by on the lake, right now it's just, you know, it's a little picnic shelter and some dirt and a couple swings, you know, some grass. I want anybody who rides by there on the lake, and I'm not talking about down Tarnes Creek, but I'm talking about down the lake, I want them, if they look up there, I want them to go, this is T K. This is the recreational community of Lake Wally.
Yep, I really like that idea.
There are other public grants that we can look at as well.
I like public grants.
Parks and Humanities, because if it is in a public place, then, then it becomes eligible for some of that, that funding.
I will say that the best time to incorporate your public park, or, sorry, public park, your public art, is when you're in your planning stage for your project. So now would be the ideal time, to your point, Gus, of thinking through, you know, what we would want there, and, and developing some parameters around that.
All right. Anybody in the audience have a question?
Mayor, if I can, just for clarification, Councilman, Councilmember Overman recommended that we bring the policy back in March to be adopted as a, as a resolution.
As a resolution. And, and just so I'm understanding, we can do those two things separately, it doesn't have to be in one.
That's correct.
That, that's my suggestion.
Yeah, one is a funding ordinance, and one is a policy. One is a guide, one implements it.
Groovy. All right, thank you, Susan. All right, let's move on. Item 6C, the consideration for approval and the Financial Security and Performance Labor and Material Certi Agreement for the courtyards at T K. At the Monday, February 3 meeting, the planning commission approved the final plat for the courtyards at T K contingent upon approval of the letter of credit and performance labor and material certi agreement. Staff has received a letter from the project engineer certifying certain improvements have been installed, and his letter includes an opinion of probable cost to complete the required infrastructure. The infrastructure to be secured is the final lift of asphalt on the roadways, sidewalks, and landscaping. The required improvements are to be bonded by a reputable financial institution in the amount of $170,841.50. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I will anticipate a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I want to get a little bit nuanced here. You, you've said bonded by a financial institution, that this developer's putting up a bond, I don't know, Susan, is it, it might not be a financial institution, it might be a bonding. Yeah. So you make sure you get it right, it's, it's, it's not a financial institution, I don't think, it's an insurance company. This is, this is different than what you've considered in the past, this is not a letter of credit. So I just.
Okay, so I amended my, I amended it to say.
I thi, I think you're fine on the introduction, I think what, what Bob was talking about is just, whoever's, if there is a motion made to bring this forward, just to be clear that it is a, it is a bond. It's a performance bond.
So it's the, the required improvements are to be bonded by a reputable financial institution, institution or insurance company in the amount of 170,484150.
That is correct.
Okay. Now, is there a motion? That sounds confusing.
Yeah, can, well, before we make a motion, Bob, can you explain the risks? Like, so we, what we've typically seen is a letter of credit, and this is a little bit different than that. So how does this, is this more risky, less risky, not compare, not apples to apples? Can you help us understand?
I haven't looked at a performance bond since the last one you, this city did, which was about 20 years ago. It was a company called Newland that was finishing up Lakeshore. They used bonds rather than letters of credit. From that point forward, we've used either letters of credit or cash, cash accounts. And again, this is in lieu of them completing the fin, the final infrastructure before you give them final plat. So I've mentioned to Charlie when this developer wanted to use a bond, I haven't looked at a bond in 20 years, rather than me getting up to speed on it again, you're going to have another one of your lawyers look at it, who looks at performance bonds regularly. You know, as far as the risk goes, I, I don't know if there's any difference. The one letter of credit that I had to collect on once, I mean, I walked up to the teller's window, and it's like a blank check, and I collected on it. I've never had to collect on a bond, so I can't speak from experience.
So you wouldn't anticipate any, any more increased risk? And they gave us a check for 7,500 for what purpose?
The risk is a different ques, the risk is whether they're going to finish it or not, and then the second question is how hard it is to collect. I just don't have any experience with, with default on bonds, so I can't, I can't assess.
But Mr. Sheedy's going to take that up.
Correct.
And that was the 7,500 that the developer paid?
That was.
I'd say every, every time.
Yeah, every time that there is an LOC bond that comes before y'all, that was a fee adopted by council in our current fiscal year, that they have to pay the 7,500 for. It helps all set the staff and legal time involved in that process.
Okay, I understand. And I, and during my council comments, I'm going to make some comments about all this bond stuff we've been doing, as we kind of spoke before, but, so, okay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Who wants to take it up? Motion to approve the sure, the surety in the amount of $170,841.50 in the form of a bond, and the performance labor and material surety agreement for courtyards at T K, subject to the approval of the surety form and substance by the city attorney.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion, a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous. All right, we're finished with the regular business, let's go to the city manager's report. And before we start that, I just want to, again, compliment the city manager on his work he did on our new playground. That is an awesome new addition to the city, and I'm not so sure we could have done that without your work, you're very diligent in getting that working out, so. I know people don't always call you to tell you congratulations, but let me just do it publicly, it's a very, very good job, thank you very much.
Mayor, I appreciate it, and as I said on the day we opened it, I was humbled to have been a part of such an amazing facility. It was great driving by this weekend, be glad when some of the new wears off, to where cars aren't stacked on top of each other down there, but.
Yeah, we need to work on the parking, I know, we've talked about that, there's a lot of, I drove by, there's a lot of unused. So we got some growing pains over there, just make sure everybody knows that you can park across the street at the city hall, and some of the handicap parking, maybe we overdid it on that, we'll, we'll relook that, but, you know, when you get something new, I, I think this is greater than our wildest dreams. I mean, when I saw it, it's beautiful, and then I, I like that overhead view that we put on.
Yes, sir.
On social media, and the kids playing, and mothers have been coming up to me, and, and how thrilled they are, and it's not all T K people, it's all over the place, so wonderful job, wonderful new addition to the city, it's fantastic. Go ahead.
So with my city manager's report, I want to start off with something, just to alert you to council, that we'll hopefully be bringing back to you at your March 16 meeting. As many of you recall, even some of those, those folks that are here in the audience, in June of 2014, city council, the city did issue 7.9 million in waterworks and sewer system improvement bonds. That was for the acquisition of the old Utilities Inc. system. The current outstanding amount is a little over 6.5 million, and the current interest rate is 3.16. It has a final maturity date of June 1, 2034, and thankfully, we negotiated and put, and were able to get this into our agreements, that it can be prepaid at any time with no penalty. Well, if you follow the stock markets and watch federal interest rates, those things have plummeted here recently, and we can now have the opportunity to refund this at, or excuse me, refinance this at an interest rate of approximately 2.17%.
Wow.
The estimated net present value savings on this is a little over $450,000. Your annual savings, starting in fiscal year 2021, would be just over $37,000 a year by doing this, so wanted to bring that up tonight, alert you to it as, as I work with First Tryon, and bring, to finalize all that information, and again, Paul Truce, our bonding attorney, look to bring y'all, hopefully, a ordinance at your March meeting for first read on consideration on that.
$37,000 a year savings.
They're estimating, it's, it's going to fluctuate, but on average, it's about, it's $37,100 over the life of it, yes, sir.
Finally, city council gets a raise. Okay, this sounds good.
Great, absolutely take that up. Just a couple of other quick things, one, everybody that's on one of our boards, commissions, or committees, we have, they've been contacted, and we've got 23 terms expiring in March across those, so the deadline to apply, and this is for anybody, if you're not currently serving and would like to serve, deadline to apply is March 4. The application is on our city website, easy to find, we'll have links to it in the, in the rewind, and things of that nature, and we'll have that on your March 16 meeting as well for, to, to review those. As soon as we can get all those applications put together, we'll try to get that into you well in advance of the, of the council packets, you've got plenty of time to review that. Counsel, I had sent you an update at one point on our spring sports registration, as it was winding down, was able to get the final numbers today from, from our Parks and Rec staff. 1,881 kids, we were able to. final numbers today from, from our parks and rec staff. 1,881 kids we were able to get placed onto teams. Our previous high was, I believe, 1,600 and change. So 1,881, by far our largest registration. Unfortunately, we still had another 74 on the waiting list, but I think at one point we were at about 87. So we were able to move some of those kids off. We also had a total of 38 adult sports teams sign up between men's and women's softball and co-ed kickball. So as I said, this is by lar, this is by far the largest totals we've, we've had in T A K. And lastly, just a reminder of our workshop on March the 4th. We are going to start at 6:30 PM, just based on the anticipated length of that meeting. We'll have, this is going to basically start off, or serve as the kickoff of our budget planning process for 2021. Our auditor will be on hand to provide his report, followed by our financial advisors from First Tryon. They're going to introduce you to a capital planning model that they've put together for us. A really neat tool. I think y'all are going to enjoy being able to see it. It allows you to see what the impacts of different, various capital projects are on, on the budgets as, as we move forward and project that out. And we're also hoping to have some dialogue on funding for Catawba Park, at least the first phase of it, so that hopefully we can get to a point where we've got that out for bid for construction and can maybe stick some troubles in the dirt this summer. So looking forward to that meeting on, that kickoff meeting for our budget stuff on March 4. And that is my report.
Thank you very much. Let's go to council comments. Start with Ryan.
I'll be brief, guys. All play together. Wow, what a response to that. Parking lots slammed. Seems like every afternoon. Created additional problems with parking, obviously, which we're working towards, working through. So that's a great thing. And congrats to PD, being nationally accredited. And the chief, what a great guy. I think Heather and I were speaking last week and talked about the best police chief in the state. Direct reflection of selflessness and leadership and pass that recognition down to the guys that got him there. For, for everybody that came out tonight to discuss, as mentioned, we'll ensure to answer any questions. There's a lot of misinformation that's out there. I have my own personal feelings on a, a lot of the matters and feel the, the process was a bit irresponsible and reckless. When I first was about to get elected to council, I wasn't a fan of Charlie Funderburke. I thought he was aligned with George and George and I didn't see eye to eye on a lot of things. And over time, picking his brain, looking at finances, how's the city doing? I came to realize that Charlie's a top 10 percenter. He's one of the best of the best. He's great at his job. He was raised through the, the city ranks. He was raking ball fields 15 years ago. Does he make the right decisions 100% of the time? In this scenario, there was nothing that was illegal or outside of the procurement policy, according to the investigation that we did, along with the city, the city attorney, back in July of last year. So the fact that this comes to light seven months later, to me, is a complete waste of time and effort because we did our due diligence and we sat in the back room talking about this for two hours. If the tides were turned and Charlie Funderburke took this information to the press because he didn't get his way, he would be fired. But because the tides are turned, that's not the scenario right now. The method that this process is going is, is not the way it should have been. That's it.
Thank you. Alicia.
All right. So I just want to make a comment after Ryan's that I just want to make sure that it's very clear that I did not go to the media, that I was contacted through the mayor. Mayor was reached out to, to do an interview. He said he can't do it. He said, hey, Alicia, can you do it? I said, hey, I'm going to do it. I'm going to speak the truth. That's okay? Then sure, send him over. So just want to make sure that's very clear. But moving on, I, I do want to thank Heather and TK Forever for planning and putting on the sweetheart dance. I know it was a lot of work and you did awesome planning that. It was really fun for the kids, really fun for the parents that went. And it, you just, you did a bang up job and thank you for all you do for Catawba Park.
Thank you.
And then I, I'll just say, for boards and commissions, I, I know that this has come up in some of our conversations before about having an attendance requirement for those. Know that there's been some issues with boards not being able to meet just because they can't get quorum. So since we do have so many positions coming up, is that something that can be looked into so that we can make sure that our boards and commissions are meeting and operating, you know, in the way that they should be?
So in, where each of your committees, commissions are created in, in their ordinance, I'm pretty sure, I know at least on planning and the economic development, both of those, if they miss more than three consecutive meetings, then the, the committee or the, or the commission has the ability to, to recommend their removal from it. But as council appoints all those, the, the committees themselves can't remove members. It would, it would require an action of council since they're appointed by you. But the stipulations are, at least I know in those two, TK Forever, I'd have to go back and look at the bylaws. I'm not sure on Boza. Same with Boza. So it, so it seems to be pretty consistent that there is a, if you miss more than three in a row, they could recommend, yeah, replacement removal. I, I think it's happened just a handful of times, at least since I've been here. It's not something that comes up very frequently, but I think it's something we can absolutely stress perhaps as, as it's advertised. Or if council wants us to consider something different, we'd be more than happy to.
Can we consider, it's automatic after three misses?
It would require your, an ordinance to be updated, but I mean, we can, we can bring that amendment back to you.
I'd say after two misses, we, we consider it. After three, it's automatic.
Yeah.
And you'd still need to vote to remove.
We still need to vote to remove. Okay. Well, I like the, I like the three automatic.
Since you're, since you're voting to, to appoint them.
Yes. Anything else?
Since you're going to talk about surety and LOC, no, we're good.
Okay. Heather?
Okay. So it's been a bit of a week. Again, yeah, I had so much to say and now my mind's a little blank, to be honest. This is unfortunate in that the goals and the accomplishments that we set out to do over the next couple of years are going to be much more difficult. And that's sad for TK because it's going to be very hard to, to move forward, given the circumstances. I work my butt off for the city. I spend countless hours more, and I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but more than anybody else sitting up here. It's frustrating. This was handled, this was settled, and here we are again. But everybody is welcome to their own opinions and, you know, I can, I will, well, I might disagree. I will respect your opinion. But we'll move forward and we will pick up the pieces and, and do what we always do. And we will be professional and, and make this city the best place we can be. I do want to congratulate the police department on their national accreditation. That is an amazing accomplishment. They are the best in the business and kudos to Chief Parker and his team. All Play Together is wonderful. I don't think there has been a day that I haven't been over there. I've kind of started making my own parking space with my golf cart and the mulch. They cut down some trees, so I just kind of park over there. Thank you to everybody that did attend the sweetheart dance. That was, that was pretty awesome and hopefully we can do it again next year. And the big part of my comments tonight have to do with crosswalks, so thank you for the segue. So if, if you'll give me another second here, just want to get, update you. So last Tuesday, Charlie, Susan and I met with S C D O T regarding TK Drive and the crosswalks. If you remember, we initially looked into rapid flashing beacons. These are a much cheaper option, like eight to 10,000 ish per intersection. When we applied for the tap funds last year, a requirement to get that funding was to conduct a pedestrian study. And that study showed that traffic was moving too fast along TK Drive to warrant the RFBs, the rapid flashing beacons. They suggested an in roadway light system at three intersections, Haran Harbor, Seven Coves and Windjammer, with Haran Harbor being the pilot program for those. We were not able to get the tap funding because Congress ultimately rescinded those funds last year and we can't get them. They are available again this year. Since we did this study, we cannot go back and now do the RFBs. That's no longer an option. Sometimes, you know, we have all of this information and it works to our disadvantage. So options moving forward, and, and my suggestion would be, and I don't think anybody would argue with this one, is to reapply for the tap funds for Haran Harbor intersection. The cost per intersection for the in roadway lighting is 58,000 per intersection. But that would be through the tap funding. The application deadline, I believe, is in April and they award funding in late June. And then work with S C D O T to get that scheduled for installation. Another suggestion brought forward from S C D O T, and this is really what I want to discuss and kind of get your input in, don't freak out, it's okay. This is just a conversation, is to put a four-way stop on TK Drive. And it was suggested at the Seven Coves intersection. It would probably meet, not meet the counts required from an engineering standpoint. But if council wanted to pursue this option from a safety concern standpoint, they would work with us. If we do consider this option, it would be my recommendation to get as much public input as we can via survey or another method. And basically, I just kind of want to get your thoughts and ideas and then direct the city manager as to where to go from here.
Say the, say the place again?
Seven Coves is the only four-way, real true four-way intersection because you have Seven Coves, TK Drive and Trail Ridge.
TK Drive at Southern, Seven Coves?
Yes.
How would, how would the four-way, how would the four-way stop work with?
With the double.
Two lanes?
Yeah. Both would have to stop. I, I don't, honestly, I don't, I would have to look into that. Yeah. Multiple stop signs. Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So you'd, would you have to like narrow the road and then?
No, it wouldn't be any roadway improvements. We, we talked about other things, right? So there's other traffic calming methods. We've talked about this a lot. Roundabouts, things like that. Those are in, you know, the half a million, million, million and a half dollar mark. We don't have that and tap's not going to give us that. This is the cheapest option that would do what we intended to do, which is slow down traffic and make it safer for pedestrians. It would definitely be a learning curve for everyone. I, I can, in my mind, when it was initially presented, I said, wow, you know, that's a, that's a good option. I've thought about it and I'm like, how would that actually work implementing it? And so, yeah, that's kind of where we're at. I do still recommend moving forward with the tap funds for the Haran Harbor intersection and then we can discuss what you want to do about Seven Coves. So.
Is that it? All right, Gus, you're up.
All right. I want to trade seats back with Heather because everything you want to say when you get here has already been said. Congrats to our.
Sitting in my seat.
Police Department and the chief. We, Bruce got it right. We, we, we got a great chief here. And it's, I'm very proud of them. I apologize for my rant earlier, but, you know, I remember as we all sit here and we talk about all play and what a wonderful thing it is. And it's one of the most rewarding things that I've ever been a part of in my life was, was, you know, helping see that from when it was for, brought to us and, and now to see it actually there. But in the midst of all those things, somebody said something, posted a comment that we had spent $400,000 of city's money on the park and this, that and the other. And I don't know, it just bothered me that somebody would actually attack something that's that amazing. I mean, and I, I saw red. I typically don't engage on social media, but I did. You know, Charlie brought up a good point. We got 23 terms expiring on volunteer boards. Volunteer. Rest your, rest your thumbs. Shut the, shut the lid to your laptop and, and volunteer. Come out. It's a good way to, to, to learn what's going on. And maybe springboard into one of these seats. That's, that's where a lot of people came from. So anyway, once again, all play, just an amazing thing. Last thing for me, March 21, TK Lions Club shrimp boil. The Lions do a lot of really, really, really good things in this community with, with kids and with old folks like me. But the shrimp boil is one of the, the biggest fundraisers. You can buy tickets online. You can buy them from any lion. You can buy them from me because I'm a lion. 15 bucks gets you a massive plate of shrimp boil drive-through at the fire station by Rundy Field from 12 to 6 on Saturday, March 21. Please come out and support it and support your local Lions. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. Lastly, I just want to say we have another celebrity in our audience. I just want to recognize Ms. Ursula Krebs, who stood in our audience there. Ursula wrote a wonderful book called, I've Cried Enough, I Just Want to Have Fun. It's about her growing up in World War II in Germany. It's a fascinating book. I read it in one day. It's fantastic. And I would recommend it to anybody who wants to read it. We're very fortunate to have you as a resident T A K. Thank you. And then lastly, we, we spoke a while back, and I'm not really sure where it all started, but about all this bonding and surety stuff. And, you know, we said, nobody else does it but us. I think we would kind of like to maybe get out of that business if we don't really need to do it. I mean, why do we have to, is any, you know, is everybody just dying to come to T A K? I think they are. Do we have to, do we have to do these bonds?
As, as I have said, and I think the, your city attorney weighed in, it is a 100% discretionary action of council to, to do it or to not. Yeah, I shared with y'all the opinion from your city engineer as, as far as final lift of asphalt is concerned and the sidewalk stuff. I think I shared that with y'all last week. Yeah, in, in his opinion is leaving those off. They can't go to final plat without 100% of the infrastructure installed. I think the county still does final lifts and sidewalks and that's it. Your current ordinance says 75% has to be built out. That's in 50, correct? Ordinance 50?
That's right.
In your land development code, 75% of the infrastructure has to be installed. Yeah, we could bring that back, change that if you want, or just start telling your developers, no, you have to install everything, which would include your sidewalks and final lift of asphalt, if that's what council would like.
So Fort Mill doesn't do it, Rock Hill doesn't do it, Clover doesn't do it. Why are we, you know?
Well, I, I'll tell you, the, the history that I was told by, here's a name from the very distance, Jean Varner. She was your, before you had a city manager, you, you just had a city administrator. She, she said that it came about as a result, there was a series of bankruptcies where all of what's now TK went through, one's called Point Wiley Company, the original developers. And it was a series of rolling bankruptcies. The, the last one was the Baptist Foundation. At that time, largest bankruptcy United States. All of what is now Lake Shore went through a bankruptcy. So it was difficult to get developers to come in and, and leverage up to do a development. So it, this, this securing the infrastructure that was going to be built was, it's a big enticement to developers because they can, as my letter explained to you, they can, once they get final plat, even though it's not complete, if they, if they've secured it, they can sell the lots. So it's cash flow to them. And it, it, it might be a year or two. You frequently give, when you grant these, approve these security arrangements, that the performance doesn't have to occur for a year, sometimes two years in your agreement. So imagine the cash flow from selling lots a year or two before they're completed. So it was a big enticement. It was used in the beginning of TK K to entice people in. Then it was used, it was a quid pro quo in your development agreements. Lake Shore, Lake Ridge, Stonecrest. You, you got something for it in the development agreements. And you're allowed to do that in a development agreement. It's, it's, it's a trade-off. So I think it's before you now, obviously as a result of my letter to you. And I think the main question is, you're taking some risk. So far, you, you haven't lost on that except way back in, in the Anchorage, with some, somebody, 15, 20, no, it was more than that, 25 years ago, some Anchorage residents, they had to end up paying for their own roads. But you, you have not experienced a failure on any of these. But you are taking more risk than, than actually having the infrastructure. And my question, as I posed to you in, in the letter, is why are you taking a risk? I mean, in a sense, you're putting yourself in the development business.
Right. And we only have two developments that are coming on. That's from way back. Is River, River Falls and Windhaven?
You've got Windhaven, you've got River Falls.
Cameron Creek, have they gotten their final, final plat?
Yes.
Okay, so Cameron Creek. Cadence, you still got another one, right? You still got another one, Cadence? Okay, so Cameron Creek. Cadence, you still got another one, right? You still got another one, Cadence?
Cadence, they've all, all.
So you've gotten their. But we started with Cadence, given those.
Basically, you're looking at a game on Windhaven and then River Falls.
So anything we've already started, I guess, we would probably need to keep doing it. But the new, the ones that haven't been started, we can.
Any new thing coming, coming your way?
Which I would consider Windhaven and River Falls would be a new thing, 'cause they haven't done anything, I mean, since whenever. Are we obligated to do something with them because of seven years ago when that was approved?
You're not obligated in, at all. It, it is strictly discretionary, and, and as the South Carolina code provides.
Okay. All right, well, let's.
Have that discussion. I think that's. Yeah, I think phase, phase one for Windhaven's probably the next one that'll be coming your way, would be my guess.
All right.
Probably in the next month or two.
Oh, really?
Yes.
That's finally gonna get built, huh?
Oh, they've, they've been, they've been working for almost a year now, pushing dirt and installing infrastructure. Yes.
Must not be out of sight or something. Okay.
It is.
All right. Any other comments? All right, I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? I was second, first.
Thank you.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Nobody's ever opposed that. We're adjourned.